That's a new beginning. That's it? Okay. I'll get started, hang on, I get my agenda. Okay. We call the regular board meeting order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Fechter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Trustee Prackno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. We now move on to the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Everyone please rise. Tonight we have the invocation of Pastor Serna of the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. Pastor, if you would, please.
The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Father God, we are humbled by the many ways that you have cared for us today and including this one tonight. I pray, God, that your presence be among these people who are here and you will be the guide for our mayor as he leads this meeting. Bless those who are here as village board members and our mayor and all those who are in uniform, who are working to make our town be a safe place for all of us to live in. And as we pray for your wisdom and guidance for this meeting tonight, I pray for your blessing upon those who are struggling in our community. And I pray for your peace, peace among ourselves and peace for Elk Grove Village. In your name we pray all these things. Amen.
Amen. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please, if you see the pastor, hang on a second.
She's smiling.
I apologize, I'm sorry, Mom.
It's no problem.
A little one there, so. Pastor, a few here.
Oh, my God, thank you so much. Say thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful meeting.
You too. Thank you. Okay. We move on now to approve the minutes of May 28th, 2019.
I move we approve the minutes of May 28th, 2019 and dispense with the reading.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Frankie. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show you that it's approval. We move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report tonight. We got some presentations with some scholarships we're doing in just a second. And in the meantime, a few things. Back on June 5th, I know most of the board was able to attend the Derek graduation. We had a Grove Junior High and went very well. And I give young students credit, it was the last day of school, they were pretty well behaved. They're thinking, guys, get over so we can get out, we can get out, get out. But it went very well. Appreciate it. We actually had a recent meeting also with ESPN preparing for the upcoming Makers One at Bahamas Bowl on December 20th. And went very well with coordinating that with them and coverage and we're excited for another good year for us. And speaking of that, as everyone knows, our concert series starts on July 4th this year with Melissa Etheridge at Rotary Green. For that concert and the other concerts during the year, we will have the Bahamas Bowl trophy here in Elk Grove. So we'll have a chance for anyone that wants to see it, get a picture with it, have the opportunity to do so. I know people say, what about Stanley Cup? You want the Bahamas Bowl trophy for the Stanley Cup. So we'll be much better off, so don't worry about it. We look forward to it. And I'll go through the summer. I will do it now, Georgie. What's our lineup this year? July 4th, I just mentioned, is...
Melissa Etheridge, you just mentioned that.
Along with?
Along, oh, you mean the next week?
No. With Melissa Etheridge. What do we have with her?
Fireworks.
Yeah? And what else?
And something else, I know you're looking for something else, I have no idea.
I just mentioned.
I wasn't listening.
Well, at least he admitted it this time.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have an opening for the village attorney. After the meeting, just come up and apply with me. As you can see, the pay's great, not much work. And the Bahamas Bowl trophy.
Oh, that trophy, yeah.
Next, after Melissa Etheridge?
I'm having a cramp on that one, too. I'm forgetting. Oh, yeah, I mean, Boscaggs.
Thank God for trustee Zarnik.
She was whispering in my ear. Commodores.
No way, with Boscaggs.
The Bahama Bowl?
Thank you. And then next, after that?
Oh, yeah, you're gonna do the Bahama Bowl trophy.
You're gonna have each concert, right?
Yes. Commodores.
Commodores, who's gonna be at Commodores?
That would be the Bahama Bowl trophy.
Very good. Next, fourth one?
Winona and the big trophy?
Yes, you'll be with the big trophy, the Bahamas Bowl trophy.
And the big noise?
And then our last concert?
It's easy, it's the Night Ranger. He's just turned 62 the other day.
Did he really?
Yes, he did.
Young guy. Compared to you, very young.
Thank you, right.
Very, 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 very.
Oh, right. Will he have the big trophy?
He'll have the big trophy, too. So, that's our concert series, yes. So our next board meeting, we only do one in June, one in July, one in August. Our July meeting will start at 5 o'clock. There'll be casual concert night. And so we won't see you before the concert starts. So remember, 4th of July is over at Rotary Green. All concerts, including the 4th, start at 7:30. Normally, 4th of July, we start at 8 because we want the fireworks at 9:30. But Melissa wants to do a two-hour show. So we're not gonna deny it. So her show starts at 7:30, it's till 8 o'clock. And she put on a nice two-hour show. And probably, I imagine she wants to do a longer show, George, because that means you could spend more time in Elk Grove to be close to the...
The Bahamas Bowl trophy?
You got it, you got it right.
Just a lucky guess.
I may stick you out a little longer now.
Oh.
Not much. So that's coming up this summer, looking forward to that. Couple other things that's happened. I was at a, well, first, before I get to that. On our consenting journey tonight, item M is a Mary has a request to go for a plan commission. And what this is, is the first step to a new development come to Elk Grove. And what that new development is, right in the town center parking lot, Arby's is looking to build a restaurant right in the middle of our parking lot there at the town center. You know, Where's the Meat or Home of the Meat, whatever the big thing is. So Arby's is looking to come to our town center with a free-standing location right there. You know where the, if you know where the gas station is, then you've got the cash station besides gas station. You got the cash station. And then right next to that, before you get over to the building, in the middle of the parking lot there, will be a new Arby's looking to come to Elk Grove. So that area's starting to get a little more popular and starting to pick up some business that could back there. Also, I was at, my oldest daughter's looking at a home here in Elk Grove. And I went by with her at an open house and I noticed one of our village newsletters sitting on the counter when I walked in. And I asked the realtor, I said, oh, you got our village newsletter? And she was not from Elk Grove. And she goes, oh, yes, yes, sir. She, I go, well, and she goes, because I want to show people how affordable Elk Grove is. So she had our newsletter where we talk about cost comparisons to our neighboring towns, a low tax rate and all the rest. She had this and copies to give to residents that are looking at homes here that are outside Elk Grove to let them know why Elk Grove's such a good place to pick to live in. So that made us very proud to see that going on there. Another thing, I know Springfield just passed a number of laws this past month that go into effect different times. If you notice, they made a lot of changes to the gaming laws here in Illinois. As you know, Elk Grove has video gaming, we allow it in our community. And we have 24 locations and we've been kind of holding the numbers still for a while. But we actually had our best year ever as far as village revenue goes. Almost $430,000 was collected by this village through video gaming. And to this day, in five years of video gaming, our police have not had one call for underage video gaming, fights, disruptions there as far as patrons or anything like that. We've gone very well. And so it's done well, we had one of our best years ever for it. And remember, the reason video gaming benefits this community, as we talked about just a minute ago, are concerts. Part of the way we pay for concerts is from video gaming. Also, one of the reasons we were able to get rid of vehicle stickers was to make up part of that money we lost for road funds, which vehicle stickers paid for, is the first $100,000 of video gaming goes to our road fund. So, and then that also, the rest of video gaming pays for other events, like we have Oktoberfest coming up this year, our play picnic and party coming up in July, our Christmas tree lighting ceremony, our holiday lighting ceremony. All those get funded out of the video gaming. And it's very beneficial to us on that. So that's that. Remember, summertime, we have a lot of events going on here in Elk Grove. We kind of started off with a Memorial Day celebration. Then we went to a Rotary Fest. Tough weather for them this year, but Rotary Fest just completed this year. We got a summer concerts we just talked about. We got a play, party and picnic that's coming up on July 14th on Sunday out here. We partner with the park district, library and the village. We have great events going on, all kinds of events for the families to come and enjoy. Then we finish up the year obviously with our tree lighting. So summer's a lot of fun here in Elk Grove. We remind everyone to check the newsletter, check the sites and make sure, you know, you get to enjoy it as everybody else is enjoying it. Also want to mention, we got deputy chief Gasberry here tonight. The police did a phenomenal job with our Memorial Day clicker ticket. Every year the state, a couple of times a year, offers funds to communities to make sure people are driving safely, following the rules of the road. And our police get those grants each year. And give you an example of what we find sometimes, unfortunately. This year ran from May 10th to May 28th. And during that time, there is 341 traffic stops, 239 seatbelt violations, 182 front seat, 69 backseat. I still can't believe to this day, people aren't using their seatbelts, but they are. Four child seat violations. These are people that aren't putting the kids, that should be in, are safe child seats in cars, weren't doing it. Five people had suspended driver's license. One person was running for arrest for something else. There's one drug arrest. One open alcohol violation. Five no insurance citations. Four speeding tickets. Seven hazardous moving violations, driving in a very unsafe way. 55 cell phone violations. People need to understand, starting is it July 1st or January 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st. Cell phone violations are now moving violations. They count as a speeding ticket or anything else. Remember, if you get three moving violations in a year, you lose your license for six months. So cell phone violations will now count as a moving violation. And I'll tell you, as someone that's in the insurance business, I say thank God. State Farm did the first national two-year study on accidents. And what they found was, because accidents, if you watch your auto insurance, all your folks out there, you probably seen creeping up over the past few years. And they found that 60 to 65% of all accidents are now directly related to technology. I.e. people on cell phones or people playing the thing on the dashboard, the cameras up there, whatever they do up there. And think about that, that's two-thirds of all accidents would not have existed today if it was 25 years ago before we had cell phones. And we all know when we drive, person slows down in front of you or see them start weaving or they don't start when the light goes. Look down, they're usually on the phone. It's dangerous, folks. I'm glad to see, for one thing, State Farm did, I'm glad they made cell phone violations a moving violation. You gotta stop that. We've gotta stop that. It's very dangerous for everyone. I mean, how many thousands of deaths now are directly caused by technology? You know, there's no reason for that to go on. Someday, I'm telling you, the technology's advancing such, someday, I guarantee you, they're gonna have a way that when you get in your car, turn on the engine, cell phones will turn off automatically. And they won't turn back on till your engine goes off. And probably should be that way, that's the only way people, you know, listen. Maybe if you pull off the road, turn off the engine, call for an emergency, it'll work. But while you're driving, you should not have a cell phone on. So I'm glad, deputy chief, they're gonna finally make a thing of that. But I do commend our police for a fine job, but shows you, people have a lot of things going on, I'm glad our police are trying to make the roads safer here in Elk Grove. Last but not least, we're talking about the concerts, Mr. Nika Baker. Starting today, you can go on our website, elk Grove dot org, and you can vote for your favorite concert we've had over the past 10 years. We're on our 11th year now. For the past 10 years, we've done 40 or 50 concerts. You can vote to pick your favorite concert we've ever done. And who knows what may happen with those information, but we'll talk about that another time. But if you get a chance, go on our website and while you're on our website, look at the different things we have here in Elk Grove. Like I talked about, the events going on, we have an Elk Grove app that'll help you in so many ways dealing with the village and different things. Look at that, look at other information, we talked about our other governments, park district, library and stuff. A lot of information can be found on the Elk Grove website. This is one way maybe to entice you, go on there, make your vote and then see what other things we can offer to help you do a better service for you, whether you're a homeowner or a business. Take a look at it. So a way to kind of entice you on there, Mr. Nika Baker. You can go on there?
I will be enticed.
You'll be enticed?
Maybe.
Do you know what your favorite concert is to this point?
I really like Air Supply.
Really? Okay.
I don't, didn't know some of the bands that you, you are more familiar with than I am.
But you liked Air Supply?
I did.
Well, Air Supply brought the biggest crowd we ever had out in the town center, over 17,000 people for that concert. Biggest we ever had. That's when the police kind of said, Mayor, don't get too much bigger than that, please, please. So we'll do it. Okay, with that complete, now we're gonna give out some money. Is that a good thing?
It is. Usually is.
Yeah? If it was going to you, it'd be better, right?
Yeah, no, that's...
Okay. I'd like to ask trustee Frankie to join us down at the podium.
Me too.
And trustee Prackno. Tonight, as people may or may not, people here do know, is the youth commission hands out scholarships each year. And because of our partnership with Mike at Microphone Brewery, we're able to get more money when he did his event in April. And we got more money. Matter of fact, we're gonna be given a check to the Character Coalition in probably August. So they helped them this year. So with that money, we're able to give out more scholarships than we did before. And trustee Frankie's the chairman of the youth commission, so.
Thank you. Well, first I'd like to ask some of the members to come up. Bob Yankee from the park district and Scott Sax, who's also on the commission. I believe the only ones else here, no John or... As it is every year, it is so tough to pick the winners, especially even when we had seven scholarships total to give out. We had the most we ever had, 29 applications. And everybody kind of deserved, deserved to win, but we ran out of money. So I would like to thank everybody who did apply. They were, they were great applications. But the ones that won, it seemed to do quite a bit and stood out amongst the rest, so. We'll take that. Oh, again, I do want to thank Microphone Brewery. They did a fundraiser two years ago and they raised $17,000 for us. And we're able to split that up over years to give five extra $1,000, $1,000 scholarships. So they helped Character Coalition, they've helped a lot, they're, they're a good neighbor. So I thank Mike at Microphone for that. So we'll get things going, I don't know, I guess we should go by the way of the plaque. Just so everybody understands, we, at the village, we give out the money after someone has bought something, a computer, paid tuition, something like that, alls we need is the receipt and then we cut the check. So we won't be handing out any money right now because I'd have to cash and leave with it, so. So that's how, and how does, the park district's going to be giving out?
Two checks.
Two checks.
$1,000 each.
To the two recipients for the park. They're, hopefully, they're here tonight, we'll give them their plaque, but you know, did you invite them to the board meeting?
I, yes, I did.
Okay.
And also to the park board.
Okay. So they'll be getting their money then?
They will be receiving their money on the 27th of June, Thursday, at the park board meeting.
Gotcha. See, 2,000 of the seven comes from the parks foundation. So they have to give the money, they don't trust me with it, so. All right, to get things going, I would like the people to come down, they can bring their parents down if they like. We're gonna start with Jacob. And I'm sorry if I screw these names up, but Glorioso. Am I right? Congratulations.
So Jacob, what high school do you go to now?
I just graduated from Conan High School.
Okay. Any sports?
Ultimate Frisbee.
Ooh, good for you.
My kind of guy.
And what high, what college are you in?
U of I in Urbana-Champaign.
And you're a major?
Psychology and then minor in business.
Good for you, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, anything, you want to read what each one?
I'll read the first one, then I'll give it out. But certificate of recognition and order to Jacob Glorioso. In honor of successfully completing the requirements to be a recipient of the annual youth committee scholarship, it is with congratulations that the scholarship certificate be presented to you in honor of your dedication and service to your community. And it's signed by the mayor.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That'll get their free coffee.
Chocolate for you?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Do you want to mount your picture for the guy?
Yeah. Why don't we step up, anyone, we'll do, step right up in front of you, we'll get a picture. Come on, here, do it right here.
They have that unusual... Okay. I think they might be... That, I don't think so.
Okay. Another one I can probably see. Could I have Nicole Brashers coming down? This isn't your first rodeo up here, is it?
Thank you.
I think there's multiple winners of some of these scholarships, so.
That's good. No, there's nothing wrong with you. High school you went to again?
Conan High School.
What college again?
Loyola University in Chicago.
You know that one.
Ram Lewis.
Very good.
Thank you.
Action. What national championship did they just win, not this year, but the two years before then? What do you think?
Volleyball.
Soccer.
Volleyball. Two-time boys volleyball championship.
Lucky guess.
It was a lucky guess.
Was it? Guess correct.
Well, yeah, knew it was a wrestling.
I thought you were talking about the...
Megan, do you think a wrestler could get enough grades to go to Jordan? No. Oh, no.
I thought you were talking about the '59 basketball championship.
So she's telling me that the... It was a championship, two years ago.
Wow?
So, there you go. And you're gonna major in?
Nursing.
Good for you. What kind, pediatric or operating?
I'm thinking trauma, but not sure yet.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
We need a lot of nurses, so.
Well, we're gonna need you out here pretty soon.
Go ahead.
Holly Olson. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, tell us...
What school you go to now?
I went to Elk Grove High School.
Playing sports?
I participated in volleyball, basketball and soccer.
Okay. What school you going?
Bradley University.
Braves.
Major?
Mechanical engineering.
Whoa. George couldn't even spell it, I don't know what it means. What major did you pick in mechanical engineering?
I like both math and science. And then I'll be able to work with my hands a little bit, so I won't have to sit at a desk all day.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Well, we wish you well, congratulations on everything.
Thank you.
And nothing but success.
Thank you very much.
Take a photograph? All right, can Stevie Burton come on down? Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so what high school?
Elk Grove.
Sports?
Um, yes, cheerleading and softball.
Oh, softball, Coach Graham's.
Mm-hmm.
So what school you going?
I'm going to Illinois State.
Redbird.
Cardinal?
Redbirds.
Cardinals. Oh, it is a red bird, but I...
Without your cheating, that's not so easy, is it?
No.
And major?
Um, special education.
Good for you. Good for you. Elementary, high school?
I'm not really sure yet, but we'll see where it goes.
I assume that's a very good education, so that's a good call. Well, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to step up and get a picture? Here, right here is good.
All right, now. Okay, sorry. Oops. Bring this back up. Sadia Quadri? Not here? Oh. I almost, I think I got it right then. Okay. Arshisha Gosh? Is the G pronounced or? Oh, okay.
Okay. High school?
Uh, Conan.
Esports?
Tennis.
Tennis, very good. What college you going?
University of Pittsburgh.
Panthers.
Good. Don't know you own a state team, but you know the Pittsburgh Panthers.
Does that mean Pittsburgh?
Major?
Molecular Biology.
Ooh. Okay.
These kids are too smart, I'm not doing this anymore.
So, what, ask you, what made you think molecular biology?
Um, well, I took a bioengineering course in high school in my junior year and that kind of segued into genetics and molecular biology. So that got me really interested into working with my hands and like cells and putting stuff together and like fixing diseases and stuff.
So you're gonna focus on trying to cure cancer or...
Yeah.
...cancer? Good for you, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm glad you got to be very proud. You should be. Well, good luck to you, wish you well. Now, what made you pick out of all the schools, what made you, do they have a special... Mom and dad gotta be very proud. You should be. Well, good luck to you, wish you well. Now, what made you pick, out of all the schools, what made you, do they have a special school there at Pittsburgh?
They give me a lot of money.
There we go.
She's burning, mom and dad like that. So, good luck to you, congratulations.
Something you learn on the street very quickly.
I couldn't spell it, let her do it.
You need to put X's down there, you won't. Congratulations again, should be proud.
Last but not least.
Ah, yes. Oh, that was it, we're out. Nope, sorry. James Baez. Congrats.
So I know you went to Elk Grove High School?
Yes.
And what do you, what college you going?
Uh, University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign. Yeah.
Major?
I'll be studying aerospace engineering and physics.
We're gonna take all these kids together, put them in one room, and solve all our problems.
Now you know why it was so hard to pick the winners.
Elk Grove High School sure changed lots since I was there.
Yeah, we just...
We couldn't even spell that stuff, let her do it. So what made you, what made you think of, um, of that?
Just an interest of mine, and it transformed into something that I'd wanna study for the future.
Well, you know, our first business comes to a new tech park, is an aerospace company out of Germany.
Ooh.
So, you're picking a top notch, you're right by the busy airport in the country, I mean, it all makes sense, so wish you well. Any sports?
Uh, cross-country and track.
Very good. Not bike racing?
I mean...
There we go.
I do ride my bike every once in a while, so.
Beat your dad? That's not saying much.
Last time, maybe.
Whoa, okay, what was that one? That's good, I'll get a picture.
Don't get him in any trouble.
Is he still in the band?
Yeah.
Marching band.
Well, well, U of I now.
Yeah, oh, that's impressive.
She's a little focused.
Again, thank you everyone out there that did send in an application, we appreciate it, and we'll be giving away seven thousand dollars again next year, so anybody junior now, please get those applications in. And I'd like to thank everybody on the committees, they put in a lot of work, trying, we had discussions on trying to figure out how we were gonna pick everybody, so it took some time, but I appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
And folks, if you wanna go ahead and get going now, you're more than welcome to, so thank you for coming tonight. Good luck to you. Okay, that concludes the mayor's report, move on now to trustee's report, we'll start with the rookie, trustee Schmidt.
Thank you very much. Being the new trustee, I've been very busy learning the new, uh, the ropes of the, of the job here. And on May thirtieth, my wife and I attended the Rotary Club, and I addressed the Rotary Club and talked about the responsibilities of the new trustee, and we talked about Rotary Fest, and there's a lot of people, memories since I was involved with Rotary for many years. And then also, on Thursday, June sixth, I attended the newly elected officials workshop for two thousand nineteen, which was sponsored by the Illinois Municipal League, and I learned a lot of things about local government. Some of the things that we covered was legislative updates, basics of municipal government, government financing, which I found out that we have a very good finance department, so they do everything right here, ethics, boardmanship, the open meetings and Freedom of Information Act. It was very informative, there was about a hundred people there, a very diverse group, and it was very encouraging to see all these people becoming involved in their local governments. And that concludes my report.
Um, you've announced something?
You already did.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
It's always fun, I apologize. It just fell into...
I know, it was perfect.
You can't stop themselves sometimes.
Oh, that's fine.
You get on roll. Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. On May twenty-seventh, we had our twentieth annual Memorial Day observation at the Park District Pavilion. Um, it was, it wasn't a beautiful day outside, but it was really good to be inside, so I'm glad that the mayor suggested a few years back that we make the ceremony, an indoor ceremony, and not have to worry about the heat and the rain and the thunder and the lightning. And it was a lov- a lovely observation. We were also honoring, I believe this was the fiftieth anniversary of, of Normandy? Seventy-fifth, I'm sorry, seventy-fifth, where did the, seventy-fifth anniversary of Normandy, so there was, um, some discussion about that, we had some great guest speakers, and in all in all, it was just a nice memorial observation. I also would like to remind everybody that Farmer's Market has started, it's every Saturday morning from eight AM to one PM out here in the village parking lot, the village green. And not too heavy on the produce yet, as we know, the, it's gonna be a little slow coming in this year, but there's a lot of other wonderful products out there, there is some produce, there's bakery, there's sauces, there's vendors of all different kinds, Meat Purveyor. So, check 'em out, one, eight AM to one PM, every Saturday in our parking lot, rain or shine. And then the last thing I would like to remind everybody, um, our VFW every three months or so has a special dinner that they, um, sponsored to make as a fundraiser for the, for the post. And the next one will be Saturday, July thirteenth, from five to eight thirty PM. It's a barbecued rib dinner, and includes a full slab of ribs, baked potato or fries, super salad. And it's sixteen ninety-five, all entrees include coffee. For reservations, call eight four seven four three nine nine two eight four. And just a real quick, as long as we're talking about the VFW, mayor, did you wanna do a quick update on the elevator?
Uh, yes, as far as the elevator goes, the whole shaft has been built, so the shell is built, and we're just waiting now for a Colley elevator, uh, the elevator's in Bensonville, at their place, waiting for them to come in and install it and get up and going. The goal still have done this summer and operational, so we cannot thank Keely Construction enough, what they've done. They stepped up big time, a lot of volunteer, a lot of the workers out there, they volunteered some material, their time, and all that, so it's happening, and, um, it looks good.
It's getting close.
Yeah, the build, and it looks good what they do with the brick, bringing it in, matching all that. And if you go by today notice, someone painted, um, red, white, and blue on all the concrete blocks between the parking area and the VFW hall.
Oh, that's nice.
So it actually looks very neat.
And just also a reminder, the VFW as an additional fundraiser is doing the Queen of Hearts raffle.
They gave out their first big winner.
They certainly did. Was, was it around twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand dollars was, went to a winner, and then they've started it over, so the pot is rolling over and starting again. It's a great fundraiser for the VFW, you can go downstairs anytime that they're open, and tickets are six for five dollars, every week, and the drawing is every Monday night.
I think Terry said someone came in, gave six dollars, and walked out with twelve thousand. It happens.
It happens. So, that concludes my report. Thank you. Trustee Listener.
I was thinking of an old joke, but I won't tell it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, June fourteenth, I attended the second annual Fire Department Flag Day celebration, it was held at Enclave, and, uh...
We were there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. Yes, trustee Zarnik, Prochnow, and Schmidt were all there, along with Kevin Morrison, the Cook County Commissioner, and it was a very nice event. Chief Michael made some very interesting remarks, along with John Dellus and Kevin Morrison, and the firemen did a great job bringing the flag down, folding it like they do at the Memorial Day ceremony, and put up a new one. And hopefully it'll be held next year, and maybe the crowd will even be a little bigger. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The two thousand nineteen winners of the Frank J. Zarnik Memorial Scholarships, and it's interesting, just as trustee Frankie had said, it's very hard to pick. And we picked five of the, five of the same that you have, so, but we, it was James Baez, Stevie Burton, Holly Olson, Maeve, and Maeve Terranova, Nicole Braschers, and Jacob Glor- Gloriosos. So congratulations to our six recipients. The only way we raise funds for the scholarship program is our annual golf outing. So please join us on Friday, August ninth at one PM, it's at Fox Run Golf Course, ninety dollars for the golf, power cart, dinner, and of course, loads of fun. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Trustee Feichter.
The Community Character Coalition, uh, at their June meeting honored two very special people that are part of the VFW. They are part of the VFW's auxiliary, and they were Lori Christensen and Lillian Dolly Mayer. And their combined years of work, volunteerism for the VFW and for veterans everywhere in this state that they can work with and help, come out to a hundred and ten years of service. So they've been doing it a long time, these two ladies, and they do things like they go to the veterans' hospitals and help the veterans, do games with them, try to help them in any way they can, and are just terrific with that. They've been doing this for years and years and years. And they also, uh, the Voice of Democracy competition, they, they helped originate it at our VFW post and have been with it for years also. Uh, these two ladies are very special with the VFW and have put in so much of their life into helping the veterans. And so we acknowledged that at our, at our meeting, and it was, they really seemed to appreciate it, many members of their family were there, it was a very nice event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I would just like to mention about the upcoming Oktoberfest, we talked about it, uh, we only have four meetings before the actual Oktoberfest, so, um, I will remind everybody that it's Friday, September twentieth and Saturday, September twenty-first. It will start at six to eleven on Friday, and now at three to eleven on Saturday, which will be, be right after the parade, which trustee Zarnik will talk about in a little bit. But I wanna make sure people will check the website, because you can get a twenty percent discount on tickets early if you sign up ahead of time. And so, that's, you know, you pay for eight, you get ten, so it's a good deal, and so try to do that. I will again remind everybody over the next few meetings, so that's all I have.
And you got a children's focus area after the parade from three to seven? Where you got bouncy house?
We have, uh, some, we'll have some kids' games, uh, bouncy house, a slide, um, I'm not sure about the face painting yet, or, but there'll be all kinds of games.
Your face, right, your face painting, balloon?
I don't know about balloons, uh, but, uh, we're, we're still trying to fine tune the...
Don't we have face painting? Yeah.
We're still trying to get more people kinda involved in it, but, uh...
Should be good, I mean, throw out his kids.
It'll be fun, and people will be able to come right from the parade and come over there, and it's not, of course, for the, you know, the beer drinking, it's for families. In Germany, Oktoberfest is a family thing. Uh, so we would like people to come with their families right after the parade and try some good German food, root beer floats.
Yep, and in September that time, still nice weather, stays light out still till later, so should be good.
Yeah, well, just, we would've maybe got a little rain if we had the parade when we normally had it. Well, I'm saying, if you would've had it, the day that you...
Uh, speaking of that, too, trustees, we need to meet, uh, finish up an item in the back room after we're done with the board meeting real quick.
Will there be a special brew?
A roof?
Espresso brew, brew, B-R-E-W.
Oh, a special brew, I thought you said espresso, I'm like, what?
Found my microphone?
We're working on it, uh, last time you only got me five kegs, so, um, we are working on it with the Rotary to get, uh, a good supply. Sold out very good, microphone made in Oktoberfest beer that was phenomenal, and everybody loved it, but we just didn't have enough of it, so.
Sold out fast?
Yes.
Very good. It's a lot of fun, and we also, the prices are subsidized, so they're, just like we do with play, party, and picnic.
Family-friendly pricing.
Family-friendly pricing. Concerts everywhere, we keep that in mind. Looking forward to it, thank you. With that complete, we now move on to accounts payable warrant, first we do May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I move we make payable, the accounts payable warrant, warrant for May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of two million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie. Loy, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener? Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passed six to nothing. Accounts payable warrant for June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen?
I move we make the accounts payable warrant for June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie, with objection, call the votes, please demonstrate it six to nothing. Move on now to consent agenda items. Today we have items A as in apple through X as in...
Xylophone?
Okay, we'll go with it.
Finally.
We haven't had that in a while.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Zarnik? Am I missing something?
No, it's just, I'm talking a lot.
Okay. Any trustees, any staff want something corrected or amended?
Mayor, board of trustees, we would like to remove item R from the agenda, it is covered elsewhere under item X on the agenda, and authorize village clerk to appropriate number of the ordinances following that removal.
Uh, well, trustees Zarnik, trustee Frankie amend their, um, motions?
I move to amend the motion.
Trustee Frankie, you second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody in the audience want to discuss the consent agenda items tonight? Okay, without objection, we record the vote, it's please demonstrate it six to nothing. Move on now to... Big agendas when we meet once a month, right, Mr. Nickerbacker?
They are.
Uh, there's no, it's a regular agenda, we move on to plant commission, anything there, Mr. Romo?
Uh, there are no items under the plant commission or the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, move on to youth committee, trustee Frankie.
Well, as you can see, we gave away seven thousand dollars worth of scholarship money, which is always a fun thing to do, so, uh, we look forward to doing the same next year. And I would just like to mention, we're coming into the splash party season. Uh, first one is on July twelfth, it's a Friday night, it's at Rainbow Falls, and it's from eight fifteen to ten fifteen at night. It's for sixth through eleventh grades, and it's free, so come on out, uh, if it's a hot night, we, we've been getting bigger crowds and bigger crowds every year, so we, uh, we look forward to, uh, a lot of kids coming out. And the next one after that will be on August ninth, which is also a Friday, same hours, eight fifteen to ten fifteen. And that is all I have.
Thank you, trustee Frankie. Youth, I mean, uh, Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
I would defer to trustee, um, Listener on this.
Yeah, I was gonna say Jim would lead them, do you now have trustee Schmidt doing it, okay?
I'm stuck in the middle here.
You could see it was controlling.
Trustee Listener. Yeah, experience, yeah.
We are, we've been very busy the past, since the last meeting. Uh, we have so many fantastic businesses in Elk Grove, it's really a pleasure, even though we have to get up early to visit them, uh, as I said earlier to the board, if anyone else wants to join us, feel free to, just let me know, and we'll be glad to include you. Anyway, on May twenty-ninth, we met with Ryan Metzick, he's president of Norman Distribution, uh, attending, we had trustee Zarnik and Schmidt, uh, and we also had some other people, besides Josh and Nick. We had Zishan Tijani, he's one of the owners of Fast Test Labs, he's also one of our BLF members, and Dave Bayless, who's the business marketing consultant for the village, and it was nice to have him there also. Norman distributes various snacks to, uh, oh, they're healthy snacks that they distribute to companies, uh, such as Better Few Snacks, beverages, grocery products. But the president, uh, Ryan, what a fantastic story, this kid started, uh, he went to law school, I think he dropped out, but he started selling snacks out of the back of his trunk. And now he's got this, I'm sure, I don't know what the value of the company is, but it's gotta be right up there, and he's only... And he's only like 32 years old or something like that. What a, what a fantastic entrepreneur. Got to get him over by John Dellis to maybe give some presentations. Anyway, the next one, on June 5th, we visited Onet Americas. That's a company located in Lake Como, Italy. We didn't go there. They're in Elk Grove. That's our U.S. President, presence is in Elk Grove. We met with Francesco Panzini or Pazziani and Katie Kelly. Francesco is the vice president and Katie's the marketing assistant. On that trip, it was trustee Zarnik and Schmidt along with Josh again. And they're manufacturing printing equipment that make labeling for the outside of packages. And they make paper, or machines that do paper products such as paper towels and napkins. A very interesting company. They're also friends with one of our big developers here in Elk Grove, Gallow International. I don't know if you caught that, but they are. And anyway, that was an interesting trip. On May 29th, we visited Miller Industrial. We used to be Miller Ace a while back, but what an interesting group of people. Peter Jackson, he's the managing partner. He used to work for Groupon, so he brought that type of mentality into a different business. And then there was Sally Miller Schuman, she's the, I think she's a manager of customer experiences. Karen Kroll, who's the purchasing manager, and Craig DeFavero, who's the store manager. Also, where Steve Schmidt came on that one along with Josh and of course, myself. And Miller's doing some very interesting things, the way they're helping businesses in the business market. Creative concepts. Maybe other people have this also, but they have vending machines that look like candy machines, but out of them come batteries and gloves. It makes it a lot easier for the companies to do their inventory control and, anyway, and they still work with retail, but just when you walk in the place, the cashier says, "Good morning, would you like a cup of coffee and a roll, cookies, whatever?" Very friendly place. And again, Peter, I should add, I was staring at him a bit because he looks like Tiger Woods, almost identical to Tiger Woods. He says he's not Tiger Woods.
Would you trust him?
But, but I've never seen him and Tiger Woods in the same room together. So, who knows?
The way Tiger played the U.S. Open, he could use extra money maybe.
So, that was a good tournament, but. And yesterday, we visited Transor Filters. They sell in, oh, so many countries. They're located in South America, Europe, the Far East, and they make a filter that they take items out as small as a micron. Micron? Micron's pretty small. It's like a gazillion of them to a human hair or something to give you an idea. But this equipment's fantastic. And the, the president, his name is Erv Keighley, what a speaker. He just went on and on and on about his life and the company and how they made deals and...
Sounds like a village attorney.
And he's got all this, you would have enjoyed this, Mr. Mayor. He's got a lot of sports memorabilia all around the offices. Chairs from the old Cubs chairs, the other team, the other baseball team. And he's got campaign buttons going back to what, 1900?
Yeah.
If I didn't mention it, trustees Zarnik and Schmidt, Schmidt were there, and which I appreciate having them there as well. And of course, Josh and Nick from Business Development were there. But anyway, it's just, it's just a pleasure to make these visits. Tomorrow, there's one at Acme Finishing. And on June 26th, there's one at Helm Tool. So, I can't make the one tomorrow. I'll be at the great O'Hare thing. But it was an interesting couple of weeks and, did you get anything from that Norman Distribution?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we got a box. Thank you.
Yeah, well, someone else gave up our own to make sure.
I don't believe that, don't worry.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have something out of here somewhere. Oh, here it is. I have two things on that. One, the next meeting for the renewal of the cable franchise agreement with Comcast is scheduled for July 15th at 9:00 a.m. in Pelotine. And the last meeting, retired trustee Petry was there. And along with our new partner in crime, trustee Frankie was there and he was very interesting. We...
Yeah, we learned.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Lot going on. It's a complicated issue, but, so I don't know how many years it's gonna take to complement. And I also would like to thank a village manager, Ray Romo, because he pretty much ran the meeting and did a fantastic job.
It was my pleasure.
And I got a little memo from Ross Rowe, believe it or not. Channel 6 has won another award. In fact, this is the second one in a row. I think they went a while back. But Elk Grove TV has been selected as the winner of the Hometown Video Award for overall excellence in government access for 2019. They also won this award in 2006, 2011, and 2017. And some of the shows, I didn't hear your show mentioned, Jeff, but...
Oh, wow.
They did have, they did have Inside the Village, On Duty, Strictly Business, and the coverage of the Elk Grove High School commencement that was recently held, and of course, public service announcements and sports coverage. So, congratulations to Ross and his staff for another great job. And that concludes that report, Mr. Mayor.
No airport wars, huh?
No, I fear not.
They're saving that for the academy. I would think so.
I would think.
Very good. I'll tell you something, trustee Listener, and I know trustee Schmidt and trustee Zarnik, especially Listener's, going those visits to businesses, that means a lot. That really is impressive, that you, the time you put in and stuff. It's good for businesses to see that government is concerned about what they're doing, even local government, that we're there on that. But it's impressive to see how many different businesses we have here in Elk Grove. And you see quite a few. I mean, it's amazing.
And Mayor, we make it part of the, we like all the good news naturally, but we ask them if they have any issues.
Right.
And they don't. They have a few once in a while. One brought up one about, I think it was some sort of pump or something, they wanted it enclosed and they weren't sure, sure of the permit process for that. And Josh was arranging for someone from Mary Jo's department to contact them. And they're very pleased with Fire, Police, Public Works.
He even said Miller Industrial is happy with the Bahamas Bowl.
They are. They like the, the type of thought, the genius that went into that.
Ooh.
It's a pack of the word. Okay, we move on now, enough said.
I'm going with you, Sam, because I want to hear it myself.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Pie Square, Hypotenuse, and the Sex, okay. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. A caring place, respite program needs volunteers. They're open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:00 to 3:30. So, if you can help or consider helping one of the days or all the days, just call 847-437-2666, extension 24 for information. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Move on now to the Information Committee. Jeez, trustee Listener.
Thank you. I've been up late writing these reports. But anyway, one thing, Mayor, you mentioned earlier about people going to the village website. And this is a very good time to go to the village website because the village is currently working on a website redevelopment. And there's a survey available on the website. You just go into the section, it's right on the front page, right at the bottom. It's called, what is it called? Current News, I believe, something like that. But anyway, there's a survey, it takes you maybe, well, depending on how much you want to put into it, but maybe five, 10 minutes to fill it out. And we'd like to get your input because we want you going to that site because it's a valuable tool for the village. It's a good way to get current information out quickly and updating it quickly. So, this is a good opportunity for everyone to go to www.lkrove.org and go to the village news section. And the only other item I have, which is important, is the 2019 Youth Police Academy will take place on August 5th through August 9th, from 9:00 to 1:30. Participants must reside or attend school in Elk Grove Village and be between the ages of 13 to 17. Applications are due by July 12th. Again, if you go to the website, there's a form there that you could easily download and fill out. Or if you have any questions, contact Officer Veronica Roman at 847-357-4172. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
I have some good news about our recycling that we've done with different events. The holiday lights program that we have where we, for several months, ask people if they want to get rid of their holiday lights and please don't throw them in the garbage, drop them off at Village Hall. And we do that all the way from November 1st to March 31st. And this year, we had 3,838 pounds of holiday lights turned in. Really a terrific number and really good that that's being done. We had recently, June 8th, our paint and oil recycling event. And with that, we had a total of 5,561 gallons of paint that were turned in and about 350 gallons of oil and antifreeze. I think more and more people, however, have gotten rid of those items at our recycling events in the past because this year, we didn't have quite as many as we did like that first year where there's tremendous number of people took paint from their basements and everything and brought it over there. So, I think what's happened is a lot of people did get rid of those things. And so, we don't have quite as much, but it's still a real excellent turnout, excellent work. And the paper and electronics recycling, for that, we had, the only figures I have are 685 cars. That's an awful lot. And we, it was just a tremendous turnout. Pretty soon, maybe by the next meeting, I will have the figures on how many pounds of paper and what else I can tell you about the electronics, how many pounds of those were turned in. But obviously, with all those cars, there was an awful lot. And I was amazed that people are still throwing out those old TV sets. I thought they were, they were pretty much turned in in the past, but I guess people still keep them around at home. And so, we saw loads of those being turned in. It's a good program, things worked out real well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Applications are being organized for the parade that is Saturday, September 21st. This is in conjunction with the Elk Grove's Oktoberfest. So, please get your applications in so we can make sure that everyone's included. Remember also that Elk Grove Food Pantry is collecting foods along the parade route. Bring an item or two that you'd like to place in their carts as they go along the route. Our grand marshal is Kitty Weiner. She'll be leading the parade and she's a member of the Elk Grove Rotary Club Character Coalition. And she was instrumental in raising the money for the VFW Elevator Building Fund. She'll be riding in the Corvette that was raffled off in 2017. And that's driven by the winner of the car, and that's Gary Sprague. So, please come and see what you might have wanted to win. We're also happy to acknowledge those who helped make the parade more successful, our sponsors. A&amp;H Plumbing and Heating Company Incorporated, Atlas Holding, Chicago Offset, Cozini LLC, Crosstown Electric, Dars Holding Group, LTD, Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce, Grove Memorial Chapel, Gary and Son, Jerry Castle and Son High Lift, the Sign Center, and we thank you for your support. I also want to thank our Ann Feiter, who has worked on the parade committee since the beginning. Ann has decided to resign and give the opportunity to others who may be interested in joining us. We'll miss her tireless work in helping to have an enjoyable day for our residents. Thank you, Ann. Our next parade meeting will be July 1st, 5:30 P.M., Room E of the Zedek Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. It's ironic that Kitty helped raise the funds for the elevator and Gary won the car from the elevator.
That's right.
The Corvette was raffled off to support the elevator.
Exactly.
So, it worked out kind of ironically.
And now he's on the parade committee and he's gonna be using the Corvette to...
Yep.
...martial our...
Small world. Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary, Planning, and Zoning Committee, trustee Prakno.
Thank you. The JPC Committee met today, June 18th, as a follow-up meeting to one that we had had last month concerning parking regulations in the industrial park. A business owner had approached the board and was concerned that the times for the parking in the industrial park, which is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 P.M., were a little too restrictive and that they should be possibly looked into reviewing and changing those times to accommodate the new businesses that are coming in and the different types of businesses that are coming in to the industrial park. So, we asked Chief Walsh to do a traffic study and a cost analysis to see what it would take for changing all the signage and changing the rules and how many people would actually be affected by a time change in the regulations. And the chief's recommendation was that at this point, it would not be cost-effective to change the regulations and that really few businesses have been impacted by these parking regulations. And he emphasized the fact that the police department is always willing to work with the individual businesses to create a special circumstance or a parking permit or for a special event or a class that they're teaching that goes later, that they're more than willing to work with the different businesses rather than change the overall parking regulations. So, the recommendation of the JPC Committee would be to make no change at this time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Prakno. Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Tanglewood Drive Water Main Replacement is progressing. Restoration of curb, sidewalk, and apron has begun. Following the concrete work, the roadway will be patched and turf areas will be restored with sod. Work is continuing on concrete replacement and storm sore adjustments along Lively Boulevard. Landscape restoration will begin on the parkways. The 2019 Business Park Street Resurfacing and Ditch Maintenance Program are now complete. The MFT Residential Street Rehabilitation has started. After the concrete work is completed on the streets, roadway patching and resurfacing will begin. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Airport update, we are working with ONCC, JDA are consultants, to work with our neighboring towns on a runway rotation plan for Flight Quiet, once the new expanded airport's complete in 2021. So, that's ongoing. Midsummer Concert Classics, we already talked about. Special events, the next one we talked about, the Oktoberfest. Lucky Commission, there's no report. Report from village manager?
No report this evening.
Report from village clerk?
No report.
Unfinished business, the attorney, of course, he's got nothing down there.
Thank you.
We move on to new business items, trustees. Any new business items? Seeing none, hearing none? Public comment, anybody here to address the board tonight publicly? Mr. Petso, how we doing, buddy? Looking forward to the concerts?
Yes, sir.
Gonna be fun, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
How was you to ask him what he thinks about the new trustee?
Oh, I don't know if I want to do that to poor Schmitty, but... Mr. Petso, we respect your opinion immensely here in the village. What do you think about the new trustee, trustee Schmidt?
You're very fortunate to have trustee Schmidt.
Whoa. But you realize he downgraded that a little bit. He could have said excellent, but he didn't give you an excellent. He said you're fortunate, right?
He's very fortunate.
Yeah, it's not quite excellent.
He's gotta work for it.
Yeah, gotta work, gotta earn it. Trustee Schmidt, you gotta earn those support. With that said, we will adjourn back to finish up the item. We'll discuss exec session before, behind here. Anything else? Remember, we only meet once a month now for July and August. Before seeing folks at the community events, I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We have motion by trustee Feiter, second by trustee Listener. Lori, call the roll.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Even though it doesn't officially start till Friday, we'll say it starts today. Summer's here, meeting adjourned. Summer's here, meeting adjourned.